Welcome everyone here tonight. And at this time, can we have rolls call, Mrs. Bowler?
Ms. Anderson.
Here.
Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Mr. Jones.
Here.
Ms. Page.
Here.
Ms. Glinturne. Madam Chair, the board certifies the presence of the court.
Thank you. Can we all stand with the pleasure to be here?
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Um, is there any changes to the agenda?
Yes ma'am, we have two additions this evening under number five, superintendent's reports and recommendations, C and D for a local special education annual plan and a quick update on the budget with new developments that came out Friday.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to accept the agenda with these additions?
Some room?
Can I have a second? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion approval of the agenda. Down to the consent agenda, minutes and financial reports. Um, can I have a motion to accept these?
Yes ma'am, only the motion that we approved, minutes from the January twenty-third, twenty twenty-three meeting, March two thousand twenty-three, financial report and the monthly school nutrition report.
Thank you. Can I have a second? All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Monthly operating bills.
Madam Chair, I have those also and I made the motion, we approved the monthly operating bills, in a sum of five million nine hundred fifty-nine thousand nine hundred twenty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents.
Thank you. I've reviewed those as well, so I will second that motion. All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Um, we are now down to recognitions.
Alright, thank you ma'am. Chair members of the board, at this time invite Dr. Anderson and Dr. Hopkins to come over. We have art contests and art students to recognize this evening, and so if we can get Judy and Renee.
And if you have each of the art teachers come in please.
Good evening, Madam Chair, board members and Dr. Morning. Every year at this time, we honor our art students and their teachers for the excellent work that they do all year. And at this time, we are going to recognize those who submitted artwork for the Virginia School Board Association's artwork contest that they hold every year. What we do is each school submits artwork from the various grade levels and they come up here and we have a judging and we choose winners in two categories, a judges' choice and a people's choice. So tonight, we're going to be recognizing first, the people's choice awards, one for each grade level. And then we are also going to talk about the judges' choice. And those three art pieces that are chosen as the judges' choice, then move on to the Virginia School Board Association Art Show. And I'm not sure how many counties are, it's all the counties in our region. And then our students compete in an art show there for the winner. And if we are chosen either first, second or third place in the Virginia School Board Association Art Show, then the winners, their artwork is displayed throughout the state of Virginia for the next school year. So at this time, we're going to let the art teachers tell you a little bit about their students and the submissions.
Good evening. Unfortunately, Ms. McGinnis from Orange Elementary was unable to be here tonight, um, so I would like to recognize their artist. Kara Sparks could come forward. Kara, Kara's submission was Northern Lights and Ms. McGinnis wanted us to share a few words about Kara as an artist. Kara is an extremely artistic young lady who is always engaged in class and enjoys any assignment she is given in art class. She is an exemplary student in her class and is not only creative, but has excellent craftsmanship in her work. She's an absolute joy to teach and I'm thankful that I've been her art teacher this school year. Congratulations Kara, you deserve it.
Hi, I'm Lauren Pack from Gordon Harbor. Tyler, come on up. So Tyler is my favorite type of student. He's a little bit naturally talented, just a great start. Comes to class wanting to learn, wanting to try new things, has great attitudes. Around fourth grade, we have a lot of students who are, "I can't do it, I can't do it." But Tyler was like, "You know what? I think I could do it. I'm gonna do it." So he always comes in, learns whatever is going on in the classroom and then takes it to another level, tries something new, experiments a little bit, adds his own kind of style to it, so. This is beautiful work, some fall leaves, his colors are fantastic, turn out great, good job.
Russell Davidson, could you come up here please? Right then, with you. Okay, so Russell Davidson. You know, I had the unique job of guarding the doors in the morning in the front lobby and wa- greeting all the children as they came in. And the first time I saw Russell come in, he was carrying this sixty-four ounce water bottle. And just like most people don't recognize me without my art hat on, you know, they don't recognize Russell without his water bottle. But you know what I've learned since knowing Russell all this year, is that he's got a heart just as big as that water bottle. And he's what we call a no muss, no fuss kind of artist and kind of a no muss, no fuss little boy. You know what? Come here a second. You're the right side. And when I reminded him this afternoon at lunch about coming tonight, he goes, "Oh, what are they doing? What are they gonna, you know, do for me?" And I said, "Russell, you know, this is about you tonight, okay? You did a great job." He did a picture of a sunflower. We were studying Vincent Van Gogh and how Vincent loved the color yellow because he thought it was a good warm color for love and he gave people paintings of sunflowers that he loved. And so I'm sure his mom holds that sunflower in a very special place. So congratulations Russell, great job and here's your certificate.
Hi Axel, would you like to join me? I have the privilege of talking about Axel Patey. He is a fourth grader at our school and he is just an excellent artist. He draws all the time, he always comes in and has an idea of what he wants to do. His, especially like his drawings of people. I told his family once, I said, "You know, he could be a professional artist. He could be like a graphic designer of graphic novels or comic books." And they said, "Oh, you know, he's already drawing those." And in fact, I was just talking to his family and he has about eight hundred in various states at home. So he is just the kind of student that you love to have. He works hard, he's just the nicest person, always encourages his classmates when they get, "Oh Axel, that's all good, I can't do it," and he's like, "Oh, just try." So he, um, just is a wonderful artist and he did this drawing with the shading. And he just told me, "Shading is really fun." So thank you, Rex.
This is Zachary and he is a first grader at Unionville Elementary School. And you can see his artwork up there, Snowman and Cardinal. And I was challenging my students to really spill the face of their paper and then give some expressions to the faces of that snowman and cardinal. And I tell you, we had this little board and it was the talk of the school. I mean, his little face of the cardinal, we were all wondering, "What does he say? And what does he think?" So good job Zachary and here is your word. And I also have Ava Hitchens. So this is Ava Hitchens and she's a fifth grader at Lightfoot Elementary School. And we were working on a piece called A Winter Night. And the students were asked to do a picture in the foreground and then create, like a silhouette, sorry, in the foreground over a choice and then create a background using different shades. And Ava has a passion for horses. She is always drawing horses and horses. We just love to look at them. And I'm so glad that you chose a horse for this piece and followed your passion.
Okay, I'm here for Ms. Reeves from Prospect Heights. She regrets that she could not be here today, but I'm not sure if Lorelei Fletcher is here or not. Lorelei, are you here? Okay, well, we'll talk about it anyhow. It's called Watcher or Watching and the intricacy of this is incredible. Lorelei created a wonderful charcoal image of the eye that shows her ability to create realistic human features and shows her understanding of shading and light. Ms. Reeves says charcoal is a medium that requires you to envision the light in the dark areas of your objects before you start applying it. Uh, she believes that Lorelei did an amazing job at the end in applying charcoal and blending it out just perfectly and boy, that's so realistic. So Lorelei, thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm here on behalf of Ms. Bravo, our teacher of Locust Grove Middle School. Ms. Emma Mills with us this evening. Not sure Emma was able to be here tonight. Ms. Bravo shares that Emma is an incredibly kind and creative girl. Her work, not only in this project, but also in all of the other things that she does, shows dedication to fine details, craftsmanship and originality. Her patience and persistence have strengthened her ability to execute her ideas and prepare her to approach new challenges with a creative problem-solving mindset. We'd just like to recognize Emma Mills and we will make sure that you recognize that school.
Hi, my name is Jimmy Howie and I'm here tonight to recognize first, Mikel Labrum. So Mikel Labrum is the talented senior, he's here before you, who created the linoleum block print titled Strangers. She created this work of art around the theme of identity and the interaction of relationships. Her attention to pattern, rhythm and detail are evident in her artwork. Some of her other pieces were recently on display at the two thousand twenty-three Fine Arts Festival hosted at Orange County High School. Mikel is a well-rounded creative individual. Not only is she a creative visual artist, but she is also active in choir and band. I like to call her a modern Renaissance woman. I look forward to seeing her talent grow and develop as she goes on to pursue a future career in the arts after graduation.
So let's have one more round of applause for all of our people's prayers. The next category that we're going to recognize tonight is our judges' choice. And these three students' artwork was sent forward to the Virginia School Board Association's for their contest with all the other school divisions. I will mention that as you leave tonight, you'll notice all of the winners that are being represented here tonight, you'll see that their artwork is framed and it will be here for a year and then you can pick it up if a parent wants to come and get it. But we keep it up here for a long time, it's a way we have been framed. So they look wonderful, so make sure you take a look at it before you leave. So next we'll have Locust Grove primary.
Hello again. We're all here because we support the arts and education, they're so important. And you know, if you take that word arts and you rearrange the letters, you get the word star. And you notice that I'm wearing Vincent Van Gogh's Starry Night tie tonight because there are a lot of stars here tonight and one of them is my little friend here, Anna Lee Allen. Can you come up to Anna Lee? When I think of a talented artist and hard worker, I think of Anna Lee. She would have been here last year except for the fact that I sent a piece of her art home with her to show her parents first, uh, to send into a show. And when she brought it back, unfortunately, it got a little messed up in the backpack or something. So she didn't get a chance to be in that, but that was good because she got this piece in and it took this wonderful honor. So she did an underwater resist, a watercolor resist, and that means we put like an oil pastel or crayon down first and then we go over it with a wash of watercolor and the oil pastel resists the water, so everywhere you see blue is where the, just the paper was showing. But Anna Lee is a little girl that you just can't resist. She's just a beautiful artist and a wonderful student. Um, I know we say it all the time, but I would just love to have a classroom full of students like Anna Lee and like Russell. So Anna Lee, congratulations, you're a wonderful artist and you have great things to come.
Alright, so this work of art that you see here was created by Mackenzie Moubert. Mackenzie has a natural gift for creativity and art. Having had her as a student in all three levels of visual art offered at the high school, I have observed her skills improve and expand over the years. And she's only a junior and she's currently enrolled in my Advanced Art class. Her artwork that you see on display tonight is from a project in which students first learned about the psychology of color and were then asked to paint a monochromatic self-portrait using a hue that matched a part of their personality. Her final product is clearly captivating. Mackenzie recently had other paintings and pieces that were on display at the two thousand twenty-three Fine Arts Festival as well. She is a self-motivated student with a bright future ahead of her.
Okay, so is Leah Lamb here? Leah. Okay, so Leah, I thought this was incredible. When I saw this one, I've never had a migraine, but I mean, my goodness, thank the Lord. Leah creating a unique and outstanding white pencil drawing of a skull with beautiful ornate flowers emerging from it. Leah captures the beauty of the skull and the flowers through shading and details. Leah creates images that capture your eyes and has shown growth and skill over the last two years. She continues to stun me, meaning our art teacher Anna Lee as well, to be quite honest, and her classmates and her talent in the art room. It's breathtaking, to be quite honest with you, so congratulations.
And I would like to say that we left Leah's for last because Leah's actually earned the first place for middle school in the the SBA regional competition. So hers will be on display throughout Virginia, the region for government offices for a year, but that night, we won.
Well, I'd like to say it's always amazing to see what talent we have in our students like this. And but what's also important, I think, to recognize is these teachers. Because you know, you have to have a connection and the ability to reach these kids and encourage them to express themselves through the arts like this. And it's always very refreshing to see, so I thank you again. And I say, let's give those teachers a round of applause.
Um, at this time, we're down to public comment. So what I will do is I will recess for a few minutes. So if there are any parents who are wanting to grab the little ones and escape before we get into some business, you can, and then we'll brief them in just a few minutes, okay? At this time, I will call the United Board and I will open public comment. And this is Bowler. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes ma'am. And what I will do is, as in the past, I will call three at a time so that we can just move along. So the first three speakers are Ryan Markey, Laura Daniel and Christina Holt. Ryan Markey?
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Ryan Markey. I'm a lifelong citizen here of Orange County. I grew up in this school system. This building that we're in right now is the Prospect Heights that I went to. And my parents, Rick and Roxy Markey, uh, their neighbor, friend was Judy Gard- uh, sorry, Judy Carter, longtime standing member of the school board. I'm here to talk about, as a parent of a child, is a junior in the high school, who is a former student of Calmadas. Now, I don't have to tell anyone here the accolades and awards and the honors that Mr. Dos has won, I'm sorry, that these kids have won under the teaching and mentoring of Mr. Dos. We all already know that and I don't have to tell you guys the awards that Mr. Dos himself has won because you're the ones that gave those to him. What I will say, I will personally hear is that for the past couple of years, my family has gone through some tragedies that no family should ever have to see. And Mr. Dos was there to see my kid through all of that. Mr. Dos has been a great mentor and he's quite frankly been a great friend of these kids. He is probably the finest teacher that I could think of. And the other day, my son says to me that Mr. Dos has a work ethic like no other human being he has ever met. And that includes me, and I'm an EMT who's used to sixteen-hour shifts. So I don't know what Mr. Dos did to get what he got, but if it wasn't for anything illegal or inappropriate, I think he made a really big mistake. Probably the biggest that this school board has ever made in my forty-one years living here. I also want to address how it was handled. Mr. Jones, you have children in school. I'd like to ask you, how would you feel if their principal came into their room and said to them, "Hey, this teacher that you've come to know, come to admire, from the respect, frankly love, no longer with the school system. And if you have any questions, we don't discuss personnel issues." With your kids crying and being visibly upset, he aboutfaces and walks out. How would that make you feel? Makes me feel pretty bad because that's what happened to my kid. That's what Mr. Cal- Calmary did with our children. Didn't feel too good. Mr. Dos has done a lot for a lot of these kids and I don't think there's a parent or kid here that wouldn't say the same. So what I'm gonna ask tonight, please do right by these kids. Please give them back their freedom. Thank you.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm here speaking in regards to the request of the lack of advanced math classes at the middle school level and about the proposed change to the high school schedule. First and foremost, this should have been discussed with the public, with public comment. In the past, I know Mr. Hopkins has said that the people that need to know will know. Well, we, the people, need to know because you serve the people, the people who have voted you in. It's your job sitting up there to serve the people and to do what's best for kids. Over the last several years, there's been a decrease in the amount of algebra and geometry classes offered at the middle school. I can only speak in numbers at the middle, Locust Grove Middle School because my FOIA requests for the numbers for both middle schools and the high school what came back with an estimate of four hundred and fifty dollars, just so I can stand up here and provide you numbers to back what I'm saying. But instead, we'll go by what I know. Locust Grove Middle School is down to one algebra class with thirty-five students in it, thirty-five. No other teacher, thirty-five. There's one geometry class with three students in it being taught virtually. Now between this, the lack of advanced math classes, and then the proposed change to make high school classes year-round on an A-B schedule, how are our kids gonna be able to reach calculus? It's gonna be impossible, especially when you eliminate it. The other thing that this county is failing is that all eighth graders, per Virginia code, all eighth graders are eligible to take algebra, but that wasn't offered. Frankly, it was only offered to twenty-nine eighth graders. There were four students that moved into the county and there were two seventh graders. That's it. There are more kids capable of being in that algebra class, but were denied the opportunity. So that's what I meant when I said you were dumbing down kids. You have kids that are capable, fully capable, of performing at a level that you guys have denied access to that kid to take that class. That's what I mean. You are not allowing kids to reach their full potential. Now, I know Mr. Hopkins and I have gone round and round before about the fact that the Virginia Department of Education has stated stuff. In all of my conversations with them, they have stated in no way, shape or form are they denying kids advanced classes or accelerated classes. But yet, that's what the county wants to do. Again, tell me, how are kids gonna reach calculus? How are kids gonna be able to take more than? reach calculus? How are kids going to be able to take more than one class? What about the kids that fail? I know you guys are trying to reach out for those kids that are failing. But what about these gifted kids that you are going to lose in the process? And it's not just about gifted kids. It's about the average kids that are capable, that you are not giving the opportunity. Orange should be the fullest extent. Thank you.
Um, there's a short tweet to go on for Mr. Dos. It's more than just Mr. Dos. What's going on? If you go into the high school, and I ask you all to do so, maybe not announce, just go in, walk around, feel the atmosphere of what's going on in the school. You can cut it for the night. It's very, very tense over there. There are teachers and staff that are walking on eggshells, that literally will look over their shoulder to see who's standing around before they say hey there. Does that sound like a place that you want to work? And if they feel like that, how do you think the students feel? That's not what I want my son or any of the other students to develop. They need to be taught not go through drama. And they're going through drama. As adults, we need to set the example. And I think we need to do better. Go in, talk to the students, talk to the staff, see what we can do to do things better. Because going in and saying your teacher is no longer employed here, or no longer here, and walking out and not discussing it any further, that hurts them. That's not what they need. They need to focus on their studies, not through drama. That's what they need. Our next speakers are Christine Freshwater, Mary Garner, and Alan Daniel.
Good evening. My name is Christine Freshwater, and I have had a child in Orange County High School for seven, or Orange County, for seventeen years. My oldest is twenty-two. The music education program here was pretty much built by Mr. Dos. And it has flourished, my oldest and now my youngest. My oldest is about to graduate from Shenandoah University in music education because of Mr. Dos. He originally wanted to be a doctor when he entered high school in the eighth grade. Was taking band classes like crazy. The minute he entered band, he wanted to do marching band, he wanted to do drum line. We literally never stopped the music. And it was maybe halfway through his eighth grade year, he says, Mom, I don't care about the money. I don't want to go through twenty years of school. I want to go with my passion, and I want to be a music educator. And so he is almost there, and we are very, very proud of him. And like I said, we would not be in this position without Mr. Dos. My youngest is a seventh grader at Locust Grove Middle School, who has been direct to every competition that Zach ever went to. He has grown up to love the arts. We went to Ohio for World Percussion International, and he was just in love with it. He actually was around to see MJ perform and wanted to be a drummer just like MJ and her partner Cory, and he has followed suit. And he was invited to be in the marching band and drum line as a seventh grader, a twelve-year-old. And I wanted to read something really quick. He would probably kill me. But he wrote a letter. And this is from his heart, and I just cannot express enough how much we love Mr. Dos. He says, Hi, I'm a seventh grader at Locust Grove Middle School. I participated in both marching band, and now I'm in the drum line of the high school. I would like to say that Mr. Dos has needed an, in the Orange County band program, and is important to what I love to do. I'm a big fan of band and indoor drum line and was very excited to join when I could. I'm up for the challenge, and without Mr. Dos, I wouldn't be challenged. The amount of work Mr. Dos puts into us and band is astonishing. I need Mr. Dos in my life to do what I want to do, and others love him too. We are all humans, and I don't think it is a fair punishment. It would be too big of a loss to just let Mr. Dos go. And honestly, what I want to do in college could be affected by this. I want to do WGI drum line in college, and the only reason I'm where I'm at is because of Mr. Dos and band. My life was changed by Mr. Dos, and I don't want him to leave. Band has always and will always be a huge family. And would everybody that's here for Mr. Dos, please stand up, show this man how much we love him. Thank you.
Hi, how are you? Thank you all for hearing me. Can you all hear me okay? All right. So my name's MJ. It's Mary Dawson. People will be calling me MJ. I've known Mr. Dos since I was an eighth grader. You know, I moved here. I wasn't born in this, born and raised in this county. Moved here about halfway through middle school. As soon as I came into Mr. Dos' band class, I immediately recognized the standard, the devotion and the passion that this man had, not just for the program, but for the kids as well. In more ways than just drumming or just music. As you heard earlier from Ms. Freshwater, you know, a lot of kids look up to us. A lot of kids look up to not just the music, but also the work ethic. Mr. Dos teaches more than just how to stay on beat. He teaches you how to carry yourself as a person, how to interact with others, what it means, like what teamwork means, what it means to build something, to be a part of something greater than yourself. I genuinely fear, graduated in 2019, spent some time there, but I genuinely fear that the experience that I have won't be available to these kids with Mr. Dos being gone. Now, I'm sure you can find a band director who knows the music thing sore. But the work ethic and the devotion to this community and these children can't be replaced just as easily. It can't be replaced with everyone, with anyone with a master's degree or anyone with a PhD. I had a horrible accident a year and a half ago. And I bring that up because I've been in a tough space ever since then, recovering mentally, spiritually, emotionally, physically. And Mr. Dos reached out to me this past summer, and he offered me the opportunity to come and be the drum line instructor and work with the kids one-on-one. I worked with Caleb, Ms. Freshwater's son, and I actually marched with Zach, your oldest son, as she mentioned, when he was going to Shenandoah. And, excuse me. So he offered me this position, and I came in under the expectation that we would now develop a mentor-mentee relationship that would go on, hopefully, for years to come. And now with this happening, I'm unsure of my own future, future, let alone the children. And at the end of the day, education should be about the children. It's not about the adults. It's not about who feels good doing what, or who feels good saying what, or who feels good being empowered. It's about the children, the kids that are here, going to school to learn, to build something new, to be a part of this family. And every single time I think of this position, yeah, it's a shame that I won't have the teacher, the friend, the mentor that I hope to have and look up to. But I just keep coming back to these poor kids who have been just absolutely distraught and broken from what's happened. And I think it's a great suggestion for you to walk into that school, go into the program, and just simply, just see what it feels like, just watch the kids' faces. You know, I was, when Mr. Dos left, I was the acting drum line director. I got thrown into what felt like an impossible position. I was also told, man you worked with for nine years is gone. Don't expect anything else from him. The principal left, and I was left with thirty kids in a drum line to run. And I did what Mr. Dos taught me to do, which is pull together, depend on one another, work hard, do your best, the score, the money, the paper will come later. So I'm asking you to do the same thing. Don't worry about the paper. Don't, as long as it's not illegal or inappropriate. Just bring that man back for these kids, not for me, and not for you, for these kids. Because that's who it matters for, I think.
Good evening, superintendent and school board members. Sounds like we have a few issues at the high school. But I wanted to address some concerns that I have after hearing about the proposed changes at the high school. As it came to my attention, the high school will be dropping from the semester-long schedule, and will be, will start transitioning to an all-year schedule with eighty days. I am not sure what concerns me more, the fact that the public has not been notified of this change, or the plan is still moving forward despite the fact that many of the teachers and other community members have spoken in opposition of this as well. In the year, year-long schedule, if a student fails a course, they are forced into summer school and retake them classes next year. With the current schedule, a student can fail a class and fail in the fall and retake it in spring. That is a huge benefit for the current scheduling. Also, since the middle schools are waiting to offer algebra, the highest math an Orange County student can obtain with the year-long schedule would be pre-calculus, given Algebra I in eighth grade, Geometry in ninth, Algebra II in tenth, Trigonometry in eleventh, and pre-cal senior year. However, the signal, intentional or unintentionally, is, that is being sent is that pre-calculus is the best that OC can offer. Meanwhile, other schools in Virginia, our college-bound students are competing against, are able to take calculus and even discrete mathematics, such as at Loudon. And the admission, on the admission page for Caltech, it requires four years of math, one of which has to be a calculus class. And they also want physics class, and prefer that to be a calculus-based class. But you can't take calculus-based physics until you've taken calculus math class. How can our students compete when they're, cannot even get into those classes required to apply to a college such as Caltech? They can't. This schedule will fail our students and hold them back from reaching their fullest potential. Which, just to remind you, the current vision statement is to improve the future by empowering our students to value learning, reach their full potential, and achieve their goals. But I don't see how OCHS will live up to that vision if they switch to year-round classes. With the current class schedule, a student can take pre-rotated classes in the fall and take the next class in the spring. This allows students to get ahead, and by doing one-year courses, it would take two years to complete under the proposed schedule. Who can honestly say with a straight face that they think changing the schedule would be a good thing? Please listen to the parents, community members, teachers, employees, and know that, who know that this would be a bad choice and will cause more harm to our students and their progress. Please do not change the schedule to year-long classes. Thank you.
Our next speakers are Carrie Finnegan, John Boyd, and Dave Cosell.
I would like to address the Orange County School Board and Superintendent Dr. Daniel Hornick. I am speaking on behalf of esteemed band director Tommy Dos. My name is Carrie Finnegan, and I have been employed with neighboring Albion County Schools as a teacher and director of orchestras for over twenty years. So I am very familiar with how other school districts may have handled the situation that brings many of us here this evening, and what I would categorize as a minor administrative issue. How this administration has chosen to handle this minor issue is not only an inappropriate use of authority, but is also dishonest on the part of many involved and far from the best interest of students, not to mention the lack of human decency shown to Mr. Dos during a trying time in his life. You will hear from many others on the effect Mr. Dos had in the classroom, so I will focus my time this evening to raise awareness on how this administration could have handled the situation more appropriately, effectively, and fairly. The Virginia Department of Education provides a teacher performance improvement plan on which a teacher can be placed if there is something a school's administration feels needs to be addressed or improved. This requires a meeting with the teacher, the establishment of said plan in writing. Then the teacher would have an established timeline in which to meet established and specific goals, including numerous check-ins with an administrator. Then, and only then, would a teacher be deemed unsuitable for further employment. Has this basic process been executed? No. Mr. Dos has not been granted rights to an improvement plan as established by the VDOE. This highlights the ineptitude of not only the administration at Orange County High School, but also that of the Human Resources Department of Orange County Schools and the superintendent. The VDOE publications state that the benefits of an effective teacher evaluation system on teacher performance and student achievement are well documented. However, what is essential to recognize is that if an evaluation system is to have this type of positive impact, it is contingent upon the context and school climate in which the evaluation is implemented, the instructional leadership of the principal, the quality of feedback that teachers receive, and the extent of support for teachers to act on feedback in a manner that improves student learning. And that student learning and the experience of students should remain at the core of our purposes educators, something you will not find lacking in Mr. Dos' previous evaluations. Since Mr. Dos has been judged so harshly for one administrative attendance misstep after years of dedicated service and extraordinary instructional practices in the classroom, I ask you to ponder this. If asked by the VDOE to rate the quality of this administration's feedback and behavior towards Mr. Dos using the approved documents for a teacher performance improvement plan, how do you think they would score? In case you have never seen these documents, I provided them to you last night through email. I think the teacher that was awarded Do You Ever Leave Orange County High School Award in 2020 deserves a lot more respect than he has received this year by this administration. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name is John Boyd. I'm the band director at Princess Anne High School in Virginia Beach. I've been at Princess Anne for twenty-two years, following four years of teaching in Maryland. I'm happy tonight to see so many Orange County kids here at the school board meeting. Kids, parents, and alums, schools are one of our nation's great democratic institutions. And every kid that walks through that door is going to get a chance, we're going to teach everyone who walks through there regardless. And tonight, you get a chance to see the voice of the people in action. Obviously, as school board members, you aren't here because you want to hurt students, your schools, and communities. You want to help. That's why you ran for it. And as you know, especially coming out of the pandemic, it can be a very taxing position, a very taxing job. And you, the reason you ran for positions, or the reason you accepted employment as a superintendent is because you want to help kids. You want to help the schools, you want to help the community. And as we learned through the pandemic, schools are, were demonstrably illustrated as being vital to these communities, to our communities, in ways we didn't even, couldn't really fathom before the pandemic happened. Tommy is a vital part of Orange County's high school. It's Tommy Dos talking on the course. He's a known presence in the community here in Orange, in Orange County. And our communities are in need of stabilizing factors, stabilizing forces in these days and age where we need to be more and more unified across our country. We build our tent on these pillars, and Tommy's one of these pillars in both this community and in the institution at Orange County High School. I know he was Teacher of the Year last year at Orange County, I believe in the district here in Virginia. And he's also National Board certified, a National Board certified teacher. My wife drove here today with me. And one, I can tell you the amount of work that goes into that is incredible. And it's a very, very rare distinguished accomplishment. Tommy represents Orange County across the state of Virginia. And when I say across the state of Virginia, please let the fact that I drove up from Virginia Beach today to talk be an example of a man that I respect tremendously and the work that he's done here, and the work that his students have performed across the state. And the fact that he's got colleagues here from at least three different schools, four different schools, to talk tonight on his behalf should kind of demonstrate the level of respect we have for him across the state. And I'll tell you, it's not just across the state, it's across the country with the WGI performances in Dayton with their indoor group. And it's incredible to see the proud-to-be OC up there on the board. It's Tommy Dos. I, when I first met him, I knew nothing about Orange County High School or Orange County at all. And the fact that I know a lot about it now, whenever I pass on the highway, oh yeah, Tommy Dos works there. Everyone in the state knows this area for Tommy Dos and their music education. I'd like to all please consider that. Thank you.
I don't see Mr. Cosell. So we'll go to the next speakers are Stephanie Walters and Jason Hackworth.
Hi, good evening. Thank you all so much for hearing us today regarding the dismissal and hope for reinstatement of Mr. Tommy Dos. I meant, mine's going to be a little more personal level. I met Mr. Dos in 1997 on our high school marching band field. We both shared the same love for marching arts and music, and we created bonds with our teacher and community that no other activity is able to give. We were lucky to be provided with a teacher that helped us build character and leadership skills. Mr. Dos learned by example, and because of that, he became one of the best And Mr. Doss learned by example, and because of that, he became one of the best band directors, if not in the state, but in the country. All across America, Mr. Boyd had talked a little bit about the pandemic, but all across America right now, teachers are leaving their jobs because it's become almost unbearable. Since the pandemic, teachers do not feel supported as they once did. Here at Orange, Mr. Doss faced all those challenges, but still pushed to make this program and this school better every day through the arts. There are several music programs that have crumbled due to the lack of dedication in Virginia, but Mr. Doss did strong creating an environment where students could strive for excellence and be part of something bigger than themselves. Every day, when talking to Mr. Doss, he was always working on something for Orange. The hours in which he puts into a career far surpasses other educators in the state, so much so that it's caused him to neglect his own health. I could go over the trophies and all the things that you all won. And honestly, all the OC students, I wish you had worn all of your medals. I wish you had filled this room with all of your trophies because it would have made our hearts warm. Tommy and I have been teaching and consulting together for almost twenty years now. I love seeing all the familiar faces in here, truly love that, since I've helped him here for several years now. He's not only my colleague, but my mentor as well, even though he's only a year older. And one of my best friends that pushes me to always do better. I don't believe you'll truly understand how lucky this county is to have Tommy Doss. You will never find another committed, hard-working band director. He makes all of us in the band world want to be better for the students that we teach and the communities that we support. If Tommy's not reinstated, the future of the program that he worked so hard to build will fall and the students and the community will ultimately suffer. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak to you all tonight. My name is Jason Hackworth. I'm the director of bands at Charlottesville High School. I just can't obviously speak about Tommy Doss. I've been at Charlottesville for eleven years, and I've known Tommy for pretty much all of that time. During part of that time, I was the district rep, instrumental rep, for about five and a half years. And I'm going to talk mostly about the excellence, which I know you all recognize, that I see from Orange County High School band program, which has come mainly from Tommy Doss's direction and leadership. Tommy Doss consistently sends more kids to audition for Allstate than any other school in our district. That includes my own. He constantly sends double-digit numbers worth of kids to audition for Allstate. That is a massive accomplishment. He had four students, if I'm not mistaken, make Allstate this year. There are only, from the band side of things, there are only three other schools that are smaller than four A that accomplish that achievement. Most of those schools are six A schools and five A schools by VHSL standards. Orange County does amazing things with their band program that are really unexplainable except for the hard work that Tommy Doss puts into the program. Tommy consistently brings a band to concert assessment, receiving superior ratings. He consistently brings a band, a marching band to marching assessment and receives superior ratings. He was the only band in our entire district, he's the only school in our entire district that sent two ensembles to concert assessment this year, and both of those ensembles received superior ratings. No other school in our district did that. Our district runs from Amper's to Culpeper. And it has the counties alongside of it as well. I think the most important thing that we can take from this, Tommy loves Orange County High School Band. He loves the kids. He loves the program. He pours everything he has into this program. I don't know another band, I know a lot of band directors, I don't know any that work as hard as he does. There's a running joke amongst a handful of band directors in our district, it's just Tommy Doss works harder than you. I don't have to know who you are, but I know who Tommy Doss is, and I know he works harder than you. And that's just the way it goes. And like, the kids are laughing. It's funny because it's true. Right? I mean, he loves the program. He really should be a part of this program. Thank you for your time.
Hearing at this time that no one else has signed up, I will declare public comment closed. And we continue with the rest of the meeting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At this time, I would invite Hail Your Lord to come forward. Our first report this evening is regarding funding allocations for Head Start and Early Head Start.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Dr. Hornick. My, here we go. Do you have a slide? This year, the Head Start Association has given Orange County $140,000, $145,340 to use for quality improvement and our cost of living adjustment. Head Start this year decided that Head Start teachers would get a 5.6% increase. I've worked with Mr. Honnicker and Dr. Anderson to make sure that Head Start is funding that so it does not have to come out of county's budget, knowing how tight things are all around. And so we needed a little over $150,000, but with extra monies we received this year, we are able to give our Head Start teachers a 5.6. We're going to take all of this money, cost of living and quality improvement, and put it towards salaries this year. Because that's where it's going. So I'm thinking you're applicable to my.
All right. Is there any questions? Did you need to ask any questions?
No, we were just discussing my computer, which is not operating correctly.
Oh, okay. All right. So if everyone is okay, we're going ahead. And I'll intake a motion to adjourn the next round.
I'll quit and make that motion that we accept.
Can I have a second? I'll in favor if I say nigh. Thank you. Motion carries. I think it is for.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board. At this time, I would like Arnold to come forward. And we have some good news on the walkway connector front at Unionville and Lightfoot. Mr. Arnold.
Thank you, Dr. Hornick, and the chairmen and members of the board. Yes, as my partner was tonight, we presented two contracts for the walkway connectors at Unionville and Lightfoot Elementary. It's helping to remember, and we're here at the time, the design documents for these connectors were completed in 2021. The projects were not built at that time. The funding for the Unionville connector was needed to cover the effects of inflation on the Barbara project and the Whitefoot Elementary project. These projects are now able to be funded by an portion of the state's Sparked Grant that we awarded in 2022. So requests for proposals for both projects were issued in early February of this year, and the bids were received on March third. One bid was submitted for each project, but the bids were from synchronized construction services and more. We decided that the local and curate people are getting their work done. It's also the same company that constructed the walkway connector in Orange Elementary. We'll receive it. It's not very long. Given our positive experience of synchronized, close to continuing inflation risk that would be incurred by postponing the project, and the increased safety, security, and climate control that will benefit our student staff and visitors at Unionville, we recommend more approval to proceed with these projects as soon as possible. Any questions or comments to the board?
I just asked you, is synchronized construction?
It will confirm that the bids are facilitated by President Miss Tantley.
All right, forward. You guys want to vote for approval, please? Okay, I'll intake one motion, please.
I'm going to approve the move to approve the award of contract of the walkway connector that UES and LES were, were the two, two of $143,000 in 2022.
Can I have a second?
Second.
I'll in favor of this.
Is this the complete construction of it?
Yes, sir. Okay. I'm ready to go.
Okay. Everyone, either, I'll call for both. Yea? All ayes? Aye? Nays? All right. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Arnold.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board. Appreciate that. Next, I would ask you to come forward to discuss our local special education annual plan.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board and Dr. Hornick. Each year I come before you with our annual plan for special education. So this plan outlines how we will spend our federal funding, which is a small part of the funding for our students with disabilities in Orange County. In the plan, we do document that the plan from 2122 was implemented as written, and the assurances and provisions were met through the plan. There are two pots of money when it comes to federal funding for students with disabilities. The first is the 611 grant, which is called Flood Your Funds, and these are grant, this money is used for students who are in kindergarten through the age of twenty-two. And then the next one that I'll talk about are the 619 funds, which is our preschool grant. So each year, we don't have the final number yet for how much we will receive from the federal government for 611 grants. So we use the amount that we received this year, and that was a little over 1.1 million. Each year, we discuss how are we going to use this money to fund students with disabilities, the services that they need. So we use our funding primarily for fourteen special education staff, and this could be teachers, instructional assistants, or specialists. We also use a portion of our funding for contracted services such as vision services, occupational therapy, physical therapy, and also for a little, a small piece for professional development for special education staff. There's a couple of different breakdowns of that funding. And one is CEIS, and those are coordinated early interviewing services. And so that money, we actually have designated to work with our youngest students to give them the services that they need primarily at the prepaying kindergarten level so that they have, we have a huge number of students coming through, especially since the pandemic. And this gives us an opportunity to really concentrate our services with our early runners. And then proportionate set aside, there is actually part of the funding in IDPA that we have to use for parents who opt to have their student with a disability attend a private school. And it would be a private school within Orange County or a homeschool. And they're offered services as well, so we have to set aside money for that each year. The next is the preschool grant, the early childhood special education grant. It's much smaller. It's right around $30,000. We use that funding primarily for personnel services as far, and benefit. We have a small amount that is used for purchase services, and that would include specialty evaluations that are needed for those individuals. We do have some funding set aside in our coordinated early interviewing services. And currently, we don't have any private school students in that, in our early childhood special education curriculum. So we don't have to do a proportionate set aside for that. And we also use some of our funding for our child find activities. And what that is, is if there are doctor's offices, daycare centers, or parents who suspect their child may have a disability, we actually have child fund a minimum of three times a month from August through July. And that's when we have students come in, we screen them, we talk about the parents' concerns. And then as a committee, they decide if we're going to move forward with an evaluation amount. We also have to meet maintenance of effort, which is set forth in IDPA, which has to do with our local obligation of our state and local fund that we have to spend at least the same amount that we spent this year next year. And we are on track to meet the maintenance of effort requirement. And then lastly, there is a small pot of money for the Central Virginia Regional Jail. We are required to offer education services for any inmate aged eighteen to twenty-two who had previously been identified as a student with a disability. They have to prove that they were enrolled in a public school, that they received services, and that they did not receive a regular diploma. So if they were still working for a diploma, we would offer services. I will say, we offer very small amount of services. Inmates at Central Virginia Regional Jail come in and out so quickly. We barely got time to interview them to kind of if they're eligible and need to move forward, and then they left. But we are required to offer services.
Are there any questions?
I make a motion, we approve the special education annual plan for years twenty-three and twenty-four.
Thank you. Can I have a second? Second. All in favor if I say nigh? Aye. Thank you, Ms. Arnold. Thank you, Ms. Ed. Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Madam Chair. Members of the board. Last year, this evening, I'll give you a quick budget update. Mr. Honnicker as well is here as well, if needed. And through January and February, we rolled through a budget process where we identified a number of priorities. And then using COUT tools that were produced at the state level at that time, we came forward with a proposed budget that you approved in February. After that time, a number of factors have complicated the issue. One, of course, being the well-documented error with the grocery tax or harmless money that was not correctly inputted into the spreadsheet, and it was showing that school divisions across the Commonwealth were receiving and set to receive more funding than they actually were going to receive. Through the budget reconciliation process, the General Assembly has ensured that no school division will receive less funding for this school year. However, the COUT tool error is not going to be rectified. It has been altered, and the amount that it impacted us here in Orange was well over $400,000, which made some of our priorities, particularly with wanting to stave off the ESSER cliff as much as possible and hopefully moving some of our ESSER-funded positions to local funding, it made that task much more difficult. Over the past few weeks, as I let the board know, the local government has signaled a funding amount that is to the tune of about $1.2 million less than what we were hoping for. And in addition to that, the General Assembly has left school divisions with what they're calling a substitute skinny budget. And on the seventh, so just this past Friday, the state finally came forward with a COUT tool based on those numbers with the revised skinny budget. And so Mr. Honnicker and I have to go back and work back through scenarios. This will absolutely mean cuts to some of our priorities, particularly positions, and it's also going to impact pay scales. And so I submit to you, we would really like to meet with you all and have a major budget work session here in the super near future, hopefully maybe this upcoming Monday, so that we can present you with some of our new realities based on now that we actually have a COUT tool to work from that came out just this past Friday, the seventh. And so that's the update that I have for you and Madam Chair, if you work. We will, with board members, we can hopefully get that scheduled so that we can stay on a timeline. There will be time for the board and the public to digest a little bit of our new realities. So that way, when we come to the May first meeting, hopefully, we can bring forward to you an amended proposal based on the new state and local funding amounts that are proposed to come to Orange. And we can solidify a budget and make sure that we are able to get contracts ready to go and out to staff members, particularly before our ten-month employees leave for the summer.
All right. At this time, Mr. Havens, do you have a report from the board?
Yeah, for the people here, for the people that are here. I served on a joint school board for the Blue Ridge Governor's School. And that school underwent, goes under, school goes under an evaluation process every six years, and that just happened within the last month. Matter of fact, on Sunday, March 26th, there's a reception at the Blue Ridge Governor's School, and four evaluators came from around the state of Virginia to first, to learn about what the program was on Sunday night. Then on Monday and Tuesday, they went out and visited the schools where the program's placed. And then Wednesday, they got together and did a preliminary report. And the final report hasn't come out, but the director of the Blue Ridge Governor's School said that she got very positive feedback from those. So we were expecting to see that report of the Governor's School. Now, if you're not familiar, it's the Governor's School. This is our academic program for talented Gibson students in grade nine to twelve. We operate this program with seven counties. And I'll just tell you the counties. We work with Greene, Havana, Gutchen, Louisiana, Madison, and Nelson. And when I heard the group that we work with, my first thought was, we're with Culpeper and Spontaneity. They're both in other governor's schools. I would say, my personal opinion of why we're grouped the way we're grouped is because each one of these counties has one high school, and it makes it easy to buy up the work between, everybody shares equally in that. And that concludes my report. The next board meeting for the virtual school will be on Wednesday, May 3rd, 1:00, at Science Crossroads.
Thank you, Mr. Hopkins. At this time, right, can we have closed sessions for the question, please?
Yes, ma'am. Pursuant to 2.2, NASH 3711A, if you go to Virginia, the Orange County School Board will convene a closed meeting following discussion of personnel performance of the divisional employee as authorized by Section 2.2-3711A1. To go to Virginia, the reservation, termination, transfer, employment, salary adjustment, and retirement of employees.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor by saying aye?
Aye.
Thank you. We're in a closed session.